This conference will now be recorded.
Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order #20-36, and due to the concerns related to the coronavirus, the City Council meeting will be conducted virtually. No member of the City Council is attending in person, with the exception of the Mayor. All other City Council members are appearing virtually, and this meeting is closed to the physical attendance of the public. The public can participate via Facebook Live, GoToMeeting, or by submitting concerns or questions to info.belleview.net. I would ask that all public attending via GoToMeeting, please mute your microphones. Members of the public will only be allowed to speak during public hearings once opened up to the public, and I will call on members of the public one at a time to speak. The agenda can be found on our city website at Bellevue.net under the Clerks tab. We will pass on the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation this evening. Item number three is roll call and call of meeting orders. Susan, would you take roll call?
Shirley, can you do roll call if Susan can't jump on?
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me? Okay. I will take roll call.
Susan, I noticed you just answered. Would you take roll call?
Stinson?
Here.
Cook?
Yeah.
Preister?
Here.
Burns?
I will take roll call.
McCaw?
Here.
And Welch? Thank you. Mayor, hi. This is Shirley. Can you hear me?
Okay, can anyone hear me?
Shirley, I can hear you. Mayor, can you hear me? This is Bree.
Obviously, I'm hearing others.
Okay, let's put the meeting on hold for a moment and have Stacy go help Mayor in the council chambers.
I'm not hearing anybody.
You're not hearing anybody?
Stacy's working on it. Looks like Bree's on the phone.
Hey, Chris.
This is a thumbs up.
You're out here, Mayor.
Oh.
Meeting's paused. Councilmembers are here to meet.
Can you hear us now? Yes, no?
Yes, I hear you.
Stacy, we hear you. Can you hear us?
Have someone talk.
Could somebody?
Would you talk? Have somebody talk.
Can somebody do a mic check, please? Kathy, can you say something?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear us? Mr. Mayor, can you hear us?
No, we cannot. We're working on it.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Mayor, can you hear us now?
Bill, we can hear you clearly, and we can hear the Mayor, but apparently he isn't hearing us yet.
Trying to navigate through this.
All right, we can hear you now, so.
Got it.
Susan, are you able to talk? Can we hear you?
Shirley just did roll call, so.
Okay, so roll call's been taken?
Yes.
Everybody's present?
Correct.
All right, we'll move to item number four, Open Meetings Act. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. It can also be found online under Nebraska Revised Statutes 84-1407 through 84-1414, as well as the Governor's Executive Order 20-36. Item five, Approval of Agenda, Consent Agenda, Claims and Advisory Committee Reports, 5A. Approval of the agenda? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve the agenda, and then I will have an amendment. Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Cook. Councilman Preister?
I will move to move item 14A, Discussion on the Farmer's Market, to just after item 10.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
So we amend the agenda, moving 14A to right after number 10, before 11, made by Preister, second by Burns. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Shirley, are you able to take the vote, Shirley?
I am, and they are recording slowly but surely.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
Shirley, I vote yes. This is Don Preister. I am not getting an actual vote, two vote.
Okay, I suggest I do a roll call vote, because I'm only showing one registered vote, yes. Yes, so far, so I'm just going to clarify. Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion by Preister, seconded by Cook, to approve the agenda as amended. Any further comments or questions? Please vote.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion? Who made the motion?
Motion by Preister, seconded by Cook.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call vote. Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. I have a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments, questions, if I need anything removed? Please vote.
I'm going to do a roll call vote again, since I only show one vote. Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Special presentations, we have none. Item eight was on consent. Item nine, approved of citizen communication. We did not receive any. Item 10, liquor licenses, none. Takes us to the revised agenda, 14A. So 14, Public Hearing on Matters Other Than Ordinances, 14A, is approved request of application for a privately operated farmer's market.
I can't get the votes to take. So the.
Shirley, you have a live.
Oh, sorry. I can't get the votes.
14A is approved request of application for a privately operated farmer's market of Washington Park to be held on Saturday mornings, June 5, 2021, to September 25, 2021, with the exception of the weekend of Aerospace 2021, if held from 6:30 a.m. to 12 o'clock p.m. Actual hours of operation of the market will be 8 a.m. to 12 p.m., and I will open it up for a public hearing, and I believe Carol Blood is with us. So Carol, do you have something you want to add?
Yes, my name is Senator Carol Blood. I live at 2812 Jack Pine Street. I appreciate the opportunity to again come and speak before the Bellevue City Council. We are requesting another year to hold the Bellevue Farmer's Market in Washington Park. We had a highly successful year, even in spite of the pandemic. In fact, we had vendors this year make more than they were making at many of the Omaha markets. We now have over 5,000 supporters on Facebook. We had extra money for marketing this year because we couldn't have music. When we were asked by Mr. Ristel to work with the county health department, we were able to meet and achieve all criteria that was laid before us. I'd like to say a special thank you to Green Bellevue, who is with us every single Saturday, and they helped us hand out masks this year. To my knowledge, we had only one complaint that was taken to the city, and that was in reference to masking and public safety. And when Jim brought that to my attention, I feel like we provided excellent customer service, and we did resolve the issue, and he may want to speak on that. If indeed we are challenged again with having to meet specific criteria that pertains to, of course, masking and hand cleaning stations and signage, we are also happy to accommodate yet again for a second season. As you know, this has been a very successful event for Bellevue. We've had several businesses that have located in Bellevue as a result that started up at the market. We feel there will be more in the future. It's win-win for everybody involved. The city lets us use the park, and I volunteer my hours, at least for one more year. I always say that, and I always end up doing it another year. But we're really super excited to utilize the new surroundings in the park. I think that sidewalk's going to make a huge difference in how we run the market. And we appreciate the council people, like Councilman Stinson, who have stopped in, and they check in on us, and they see what's going on. Because I think it's important that you all know that it's being run properly, and that you're getting. I want to say your money's worth, but really, with the exception of the parks, there's really no money invested by the city. But I think you are definitely getting a nice amenity to Old Town. And so with that, I ask that you please consider renewing our permit for another year.
My apologies, Senator Blood, for dropping your title. I've just known this quarter too long. Takes getting used to.
That was not even noted by me.
Okay, we are open for public hearing. Is there anyone else on GoToMeeting or Facebook Live? We'll give it a minute. There is no one on Facebook Live for this item. Okay, nobody is showing up, so I will close the public hearing. And if someone's ready to make a motion, I will entertain that. Councilman Burns?
Thank you. I move that we approve the request for an application of a privately operated farmer's market at Washington Park to be held on Saturday morning, 6:05, 2021, to 9:25, 2021, with the exception of the weekend of Aerospace 2021, if held from 6:30 a.m. to 12 p.m. And actual operations of the market will be 8 a.m. to 12 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Are there any further comments or questions? Sign none, please vote.
This is Susan. I've got two votes coming in. I'm just going to do roll call votes for the ones I do not have. Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Okay, takes us to item 11 on the agenda. Ordinances for Adoption, Third Reading, 11A. Ordinance number 4020, Request to Rezone Tax Lot 14, located in the southwest quarter of Section 31, Township 14 North, Range 13 East, of the 6th PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to ML for the purpose of light industrial development. Applicant is Ryan Steele. Location is 11715 South 60th Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
I'm still having troubles with my computer here. And which number was that one, Rusty?
11A, Ordinance Number 4020.
Okay. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 11715 South 60th Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And I will look for a motion. Or Councilman Preister, is it?
Yes, Mayor. I will like some discussion, but I will move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Preister, seconded by Burns, discussion. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Given the public hearing and the concerns and the opposition, particularly given the fact that this is in a very strategic and important area, although it's an excellent project, it's not a good location for it. Therefore, I'm going to be voting against approval.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Preister. I also would like to make a comment that the city of Bellevue has 60,000 residents, and I think there's places for this business. I think it's a great concept, a great idea. I think I would love for the city to be able to work with Mr. Steele on maybe finding another location within the city that's his own for this. But because of the current other location of it and the future plans for the city of Bellevue, I cannot support it.
Any other hands up? You're testing my eyesight tonight. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to say I agree with Councilman Preister and Councilman Cook. I think it's a fabulous idea. I just think it's the wrong place, and we would love the opportunity to work with Ryan to be able to get it in a different location within the city of Bellevue.
Okay, I would just add, the city does think it is a very fine project, and we would love to have it in the city of Bellevue. I know this location is not ideal for what we are looking for in that location, so I would just want to put out my hand to let them know that we are more than willing to find a location that does work if this does not pass. So we would have open arms in welcoming that challenge. And again, it is a good project, but I understand the location's not ideal for it. Are there any other hands up? If I don't see them, just barge in, but I don't see any. So we have a motion by Preister, seconded by Burns, to approve. So a vote yes approves it, a vote no would fail. Please vote.
Susan, maybe just do a complete roll call from start to finish on this one.
Okay. Mr. McCaw came through as a no. Mr. Stinson?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mr. Preister?
No.
And Ms. Welch?
No.
And Thomas, I've got you down as a no vote, too.
Goodness, that's six.
So, yeah. Zero to six, motion failed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you as well. Takes us to item 12, Ordinances for Public Hearing, Second Reading. 12A, Ordinance Number 4021, Request to Rezone Lot 1 Wallback Edition from RG 20 to BN for the purpose of commercial development. Applicant is Amigos Market LLC. General location, West Chandler Road and South 28th Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4021. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 7616 South 28th Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I will open this up for public hearing. Is the applicant online by chance?
Yes.
Okay, if there's anything you want to add, I'll let you talk first, or you can just wait for questions.
Mayor, hi. Could we please have anyone who speaks state their name and address for the record?
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there anyone here to speak for or against the request to rezone? Item 12A.
Say it.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You say your name and address, and then I'll give you five minutes.
This is Dan Doertie, 7613 South 28th Street.
Are you for or against, Dan?
Against it.
Okay. You have the council's attention, so go ahead.
Against.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Tell them why.
Yes, just be, there's a lot of traffic already in the area, and. The traffic is going to be a big issue in that area. It's a residential area. I don't think it should be zoned commercial. Concerned about property values dropping.
Okay. All right, thanks for your input. Is there anybody else in the public to speak for or against the rezoning? Ordinance Number 4021.
Mayor, I would just note, this is Bree, that we did receive an email, and just for the record, we will consider all email communication that is received, even if it's not specifically identified tonight. We will ensure that any communications passed along to the City Council.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak for or against? Okay, seeing nobody. Actually, Phil is watching Facebook Live, and I don't see him, so I just want to confirm there's nobody on Facebook. Stacy, can you confirm that?
Mayor, this is Stacy. Phil will be right in. He does have someone on Facebook for this agenda item.
All right.
And Mayor, hi. This is Shirley. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There are several people on Facebook Live in opposition. I'd like to address Isla Thompson and let her know that, yes, we did receive her email yesterday, and that the council did receive that email as well. That message is for Isla Thompson.
All right, Phil's going to take over for Facebook here, let us know what's going on.
Thank you.
We definitely have a few on Facebook. Isla Thompson, who Shirley just talked about, or Susan just talked about, said I oppose this item. David Nich, N-I-C-H, said I do not object to this item. Matt Wallman said, "I live on 28th and Marlborough and do not want any business behind my home. It will increase traffic and it will increase crime." Tracy Lieber, who I'm going to read more also, she said I oppose this item also. Matt Wallman said, "There are so many other places for a market not in our neighborhood." All right, Tracy Lieber, she sent in a long message on Facebook. You want me to read it, Mayor? Sure. Okay. It says, "My name is Tracy Lieber, and I live at 2702 Marlborough Street with my children and my boyfriend. I'm a resident of Bellevue my entire life, over 40 years, and the last 20 at my current residence. We implore you to vote against the request of Amigos Market to build their smoke shop and liquor store. We're not against the Riveras having a business. We're trying to make a living. We are against the location and the type of business. If you take a look in the search area, you will find that 0.4 miles east of the area is a case of gas, grocery, and liquor. Exactly across the street, the case is on the north side of the Family Dollar. I'm sure everyone knows that Family Dollar is a grocery-style store that also sells cigarettes. One mile east from the proposed location is a QuickTrip gas, grocery, and liquor. 0.7 miles west of the proposed location is a Cenex gas, grocery service that also sells liquor. 0.1 miles east of the aforementioned location is Dynamark. I'll bet you can guess what they sell. That's right, grocery, cigarettes, and liquor sales. 100 feet west of Dynamark is a Chandler Inn Bar that once again sells liquor. This area will not be serviced by having another business that offers the items and services we already have at several locations, nor will it increase our convenience to obtain any of these items. What it will do is increase traffic in the area to an already congested two-way street. The location in question is at the top of a blind hill from east to west directions. With a little research, you will find a number of accidents have occurred at this location because of cars coming up over the hill and find a stopped car waiting to turn. Another problem. Another problem we have at this location down the street is that we do not have sidewalks. There are some, a small section that do have sidewalks, but they are not raised sidewalks and they are mistaken by campus drivers that saw it to the street. This area is extremely unsafe for pedestrians, especially children that tend to go to or return home from school. I know my heart that those of you who are parents, grandparents, et cetera, would not allow their children to walk down the road under current conditions, so it does not make sense making this worse. Now, for some reason, you folks feel that the neighborhood business should be put in this location, many of the residents have talked and feel a meat market similar to just good meats would offer a true service and convenience to us. Regardless of the type of business that may go on at this location, since the zone change has already been approved, you must require a potential business to run a traffic study during no COVID-19 pandemic time while schools are in full session. This would allow the folks that make these decisions about our area, but who do not live here or contend with the unsafe conditions, to understand our fears, thus justifying the prerequisite of any business in this location to install traffic lights. Again, vote no on Amigos Market. That's Tracy Lieber and Brian Cole. And she also, I also forwarded an email from her just about a half hour ago, maybe 20 minutes ago, they have a bunch of pictures that she submitted as well. And then give you a second, I'm gonna see if there's any additional. I did send you a couple other emails of people that did send emails within the last 15 minutes, so if you have a chance to look at your emails while you're on the meeting, please do, I'm double checking. Okay, at this time, you do not have any further Facebook messages.
Okay. Well, thank the public for jumping on Facebook, so we did get those messages and they will be considered under the public hearing, so. Is there anybody else?
I am checking my email right now and I have no other emails or no other messages on social media that I can see at this time.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. A third reading and vote will be held on January 19th, 2021. Councilman Prester.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would note that there have been many people in this area who have serious concerns. I think Tracy Liebert expressed them well when she talked about not having sidewalks in the area, which is another issue that we're hoping to address, not only in this area, but others, and the safety of the children walking. She also mentioned the traffic increase in that area. We are seeing the expansion of milk storage just down the block. We are seeing the expansion of the Kennedy Center development and the increased traffic that will be there. We are already starting to see increased traffic along Chandler. That will just be magnified by one more business going in the area. I think she and others also very appropriately expressed that the neighborhood is currently served on the east by a convenience store that has full service, including gasoline, on the west on 36th Street by another convenience store that has full service, including gasoline, and two in the middle, a new one that just went in east of 25th and Chandler, and one that, or on 22nd and Chandler, yes, east, and then there is one on 28th and Chandler. When all of those have gasoline already, I think that's going to be more of a draw. I, this is probably another one of those good projects, but the community area is already well-served for all of these services. Any increased business, any business that goes to this new store is just very likely to take business from the other four. So, I'm not sure that it's going to be any increased revenue to the city, but will possibly and likely decrease the revenue from the other businesses. At this point, I, I think that it's a good concept, but it's not a good location, right on 28th Street and at the top of a hill on Chandler. And that's what I've been hearing from the residents in the area. I did see one comment from one person and they liked the idea of having a, a store right across the street from them. But in addition to the people mentioned, we also received letters from Betty Fortenberry, Olga Ken and Krista Zermak, Mary Kelly and Art Merkolt, Jack and Donna Main, Suzie Day, Jamie Giann tonato, and Charlene Stender and Peggy Helm. So, those are the ones I've seen, there may be others, and I apologize to the council because of us meeting this way virtually, not necessarily all of those people got the information or were able to get access to participate. So, in their stead, I am expressing their concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hold on, Councilman Cook, I want Phil to read one more that came in right at the buzzer, so just so the council members have a record.
Yeah, we actually had a couple more come in as I was reading Tracy Lieber's, Lieber's email. Shannon Gargi wrote, no to Amigos Market. We live on 30th and McHorkingdale. This is a residential neighborhood, stop rezoning our neighborhood and increasing our property values. You've sold out, our neighborhood is full, but please allow us to enjoy our neighborhood. Chandler is a busy roadway already. Oppose exclamation mark. And then I have one more from Isla Thompson wrote, there are so many infractions by proposal prior and operator. Oppose greatly, 4021. And I believe that is all I have.
Okay, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I got just a quick comment or a question I'd like to ask the applicant, and then I would ask, if Tammy Palm would be available, I'd like to ask her a couple of questions. But to the applicant, have you met with the residents in the area? We are getting numerous people to asking us to vote against it. I think we had one person who was simply a property owner that rents out his properties in the area that was for it, but a question to the applicant is, have you met or will you meet with the residents in the neighborhood that have expressed concerns? If you could probably get the information from our city clerk before our next meeting.
Is the applicant still online?
Yes, we're still here.
Can you state your name as well, please?
Caesar Rivera.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we could be willing to make visits with the residents and explain a little more of the concept, the idea we're trying to do there. But I haven't, at this point, I have not met with them or gone door to door and had communication with either one of them or any of them.
Mr. Rivera, I would ask that you make an attempt to try to meet neighbors in the immediate area and have a meeting with them before our next meeting and try to see if they have a lot of their fears.
Okay.
Is Tam, thank you, is Tammy Palm available?
Yes, yes, they're here.
Tammy, I just have a question. Could this business eventually be open 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days out of the year?
The zoning ordinance does not limit the hours of operation.
Well, I, I was not able to hear you, Tammy. I don't know if anybody else did.
No, hey, Ms. Thompson, can you please mute your microphone? Thompson, Isla Thompson, can you mute your microphone? Thank you. All right, try that again, Tammy.
The zoning ordinance does not limit the hours of operation.
Could someone repeat what Tammy said?
No, it's getting a lot of reverberation, Tammy.
There's, there's, there's no limit on the hours of operation.
I think she said there's no limits on the hours of operation.
Thank you. I would just like to make a comment also. I drove by this location numerous times. I noticed when this first came, possibly to the planning commission after their hearing, I drove up there and the house right directly north of it, what separates it is the alley and that house was for sale and has since sold. And on Chandler Road, just to the west of this lot, it appears that someone is in the process of building a brand new residential home that would sit right next to this property. So, I think it's critical that the applicant, Mr. Rivera, meet with neighbors. We probably have, just tonight, talked about maybe up to 15 or 20 neighbors that are against this, and I think he needs to sit down and try to resolve some of their issues and bring it back to us at our next meeting before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask Mr. Rivera a question, please?
Yes?
Mr. Rivera, I, I, it looks like you bought the entire property of the school grounds and that that's your new house, is that correct?
No, not the house that's to the west of us, no.
That's somebody else owns that property and is building?
Yes.
Okay, so you just have the eastern portion of this property?
Correct.
Okay, and you have actually purchased the property or you just have an option on it at this?
No, it's purchased. It's our property, it's my property.
Okay, and have you done a market assessment based on the number of convenience stores and similar operations in the area?
At this moment, no, I have not done an assessment. We kind of just went in this, we had the lot open, we thought at the time, and still, that it'd be a good opportunity for what I want to do. Going forward, if I see it's the opportunity, then I would do an assessment.
Okay, and the reason that I ask is, you're an investor, we want to have investment in Bellevue, but we want to make sure those investments are successful. From my assessment in living in the area for 50-plus years, I really think that it's going to be just competing with the other four that are in the area already, and I don't really see you're going to be very successful. So, considering a different location or a house or something residential there, you might want to consider.
Will do.
And I, I would mention, I, I also, in driving through the area, did drive by the address listed as your residence and it's well-cared-for, it's a nice-looking house next to a park in a quiet neighborhood, so I would think you can understand the neighbor's interest in having a quiet residential area for their children and their families, too.
Correct.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for appearing here.
Thank you, guys.
Chief Clarion, I don't know if you ever had a chance to pull up any accidents, I don't know that anybody's ever asked you in that certain section of the road, is there any concerns the police department has, or maybe you could pull something up if you haven't checked?
I don't have access to anything right now, but I could make that request and get that to the council in probably the next business day.
Yeah, that'd be great, probably helpful to them. Appreciate it. Any other council members have any questions or comments?
Mayor, you have Emma Thompson looking to ask a question.
Mayor, currently, the public hearing is closed, so there would have to be a motion to reopen.
Public hearing was closed, but is it something they can send in to the council?
Yes, if she wants to, email Phil Davidson, P-H-I-L period Davidson at Bellevue.net and email your concerns and he will forward everything around to the city council.
Let's do it that way, please.
And Ms. Thompson, I have that on Facebook right now, my email address, so you email it to me, I will make sure they have it tonight before we leave.
All right, so, no other comments. The third reading and vote will be held on January 19th, 2021. Takes us to item 12B, ordinance number 4022, ordinance to rezone lot 2, Wolf Creek Replat 4 from BGH to RG 8-PS for the purpose of multifamily development. Applicant is Wolf Creek Apartments 2 LLC. General location, 10904 South 15th Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4022. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 10904 South 15th Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I will open it up for a public hearing, and if the applicant's here, would you state your name and address, please?
Rob, we can't hear you. The applicant is here, he's trying to speak, but we cannot hear him.
And he is unmuted?
He is unmuted. How about we open it up for the public hearing, allow him to log out, log back in, and see if we can hear him, or maybe he can dial in on the phone?
Okay, so the public hearing is open, we will come back to the applicant here before we close it. Is there anybody here online that wants to speak regarding ordinance number 4022, either for or against? I do not have any on Facebook right now. Okay, we'll give it a moment here, keep it open until the applicant can try to log in again.
Hello, this is Rob Llewellyn, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Here's the deal, I have to mute mine. Okay, I will just try to give you a quick overview. Our intent, and just, again, it's Rob Llewellyn, I'm the applicant, and I'm at 1925 North 120th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Basically, our intent here is, we were the developers on the Latitude 41 project, the 204 units being built just to the north of this location. We have basically been looking at that ground once we understood, you know, the success of the area. When we look for properties to build apartments, we generally look very closely for having amenities. In, in walking distance is really a goal, but for sure, in the kind of area that we're in, we're so close to Walmart, now we have, you know, the workout facility, we have, you know, Starbucks, all those different kind of components, and we just feel like that's a very strong area to continue with apartments. And so, that's been our entire focus. And then, just so you kind of get a feeling of the current, I'd call it, success of the existing apartment complex, we're about 80% leased, we have one more building to receive our certificate of occupancy on, and that'll be on Monday, is our objective, and so we've had, you know, a really good And so we've had, you know, a really good lease-up strategy. And so we are basically looking to build 110 units on this, at this location. And the objective is, is after seeing the, creating a unit mix based upon what we felt would, you know, were continually needed in this area. And a lot of that is we're putting, you know, maybe smaller units, studio-type units here. So, you know, they're not all super-large units or anything like that. But, but I think what we've done is taken the steps to, per the city planning department. We started with a, you know, a full traffic study to understand the impact and how it's going to benefit to have apartments on this ground as opposed to commercial. But, but our objective is to close on the ground in the first quarter and really start construction on this in April or as soon as the ground thaws. So hopefully that gives you an understanding.
Okay, just a compliment on your Latitude apartment. Very impressive. Got to tour them and did a great job there. Glad to hear that it's filling up. Public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else that's wanting to speak? Bre, do you have access to Facebook? Is already Phil's out of the room?
I'm looking right now. There's a lag. Give it just a second.
I'm gonna have Phil read them in. Okay, hi. Can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is from Rena Sharp. It says, "Our neighborhood is currently very busy and we do not have the road structures to support additional traffic in the area. It is very unsafe for our children in the neighborhood." And then Celeste Garans said, "My father owns a home at 2823 Margot." This might be for the last one, though. Yeah, I think that's for the last one.
Phil, I believe both those comments are for item 12A.
Yeah, oh, both of them are? Okay.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. We did have a couple comments that showed up just now for the previous item. If you're watching on Facebook Live or for the council, I will make sure you get all of these comments emailed to you before I leave today. But that's all I believe we have for this item.
I don't see anything on this item either, Mayor.
Okay. Larry, can you hear me? Chief, the area we're talking about for the traffic study was at 28th and Chandler. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing on ordinance number 4022. And if the public is out there and has more to add, please send those in by email to Phil.
Real, real quick, Mayor, that Rena Sharp, she did clarify that the comment I read was definitely for this item. So the neighborhood is currently very busy. We do not have the road structure to support additional traffic in the area.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed. We will have that. It's actually been read in. Does the council have any questions or comments?
Mayor Hike, I was just gonna point out, too, that that email from Rena Sharp is also attached to the packet. So you can read a letter that she wrote there, too.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any, anybody with their hands up, so.
Mayor, I've got my hand up.
Oh, sorry. The screen's about, your picture's like an inch and a half and it's seven feet away from me and I can't see anyone, so. All right.
I've got a couple concerns on this project. One is the traffic that they've talked about. I've been working with the homeowners in that area, trying to get the 15th Street extended past the housing area so that eventually the traffic on 15th would not go through their housing area. But as we know, that's probably still two years away. And I think right now with where that apartment complex is located, it's gonna be almost right at the entrance to Willow Springs. Most of that traffic is probably going to come out of there and head through their neighborhoods, which is just going to increase the amount of traffic that is going into the Willow Springs housing area. And you figure 110 apartments, I believe, you're looking probably somewhere adding about 150 at least to 200 cars driving in and out of there. 15th and Cornhusker, we still don't have a good solution to the traffic problem at 15th and Cornhusker. So I think we're just creating a bigger mess than what we already have. I understand that they built the other apartments there. It's a commercial area. They want rezoned as residential. The other area that they had rezoned was due to some problems with the ground underneath is the reason that was rezoned. But I just don't think this is a good idea at this time to put more traffic into that area. And most of that is probably with that apartment complex being right there is going to end up going into the Willow Springs housing area. Also, I've got some concerns about building a four-story apartment complex right there along the interstate. We are basically bookending our hotels there. Their visibility. I traveled down northbound on the JFK from 370 to see what the visibility of that is. Once you put a four-story apartment building in there, Candlewood Suites and the Holiday Inn Express are gonna be almost nonexistent until you're almost right alongside of them. I think we're gonna be hurting our hotel business by putting a four-story building on that side of them. That's kind of my concerns right now, is the traffic. Main is the traffic. I know that the packet showed that there was no traffic problems, but there's constant traffic problems in that area. And I think we're just going to increase it further at 15th and Cornhusker by allowing this to go in. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Both legitimate concerns. And I would agree. I think that improvement on 15th Street is probably two years away. This apartment complex would probably be a little over one year or at one year away. So there is an overlap there. Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Llewellyn, you're the developer-owner of the other apartment complexes that are there. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And how many units are going to be available once you have your certificate of occupancy?
Two hundred and four total units.
And then of the ones that are available now, what's your vacancy on any of those?
We are currently at eighty percent occupancy.
And then we, okay, and then, but we still have to get the other ones the certificate of occupancy and those are gonna be opening up. And how many, how many units will that be that are gonna open up?
We have thirty units coming. One second. We have thirty units. The final building is a thirty-unit building. And with that, we have some of those pre-leased as well. So, so basically of the 204, you can, we've, we've got about forty units throughout the entire project. Now, this is one of the slower times of the year to lease, but we're still have leasing coming on. And so we're pretty confident that we'll have a fill-up in the springtime.
Okay, good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Welch. Councilman Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Llewellyn, I appreciate the development and it looks good to me. It looks also like there's just one entry-exit. And it doesn't look like there's really any other option for an additional entry-exit. It's all gonna dump in and out right in one area. And for those people who choose to get out of the area, they're pretty limited. Once they're out on the main street, they can either take 15th up to Cornhusker or they can go around down to the southwest. And that's not a great option either. Boy, I like your project, but that's a tough area to get into and out of. And with the curves in there, I hear what Councilman Stimson is saying and I've heard from those neighbors myself about the traffic. And I'm not sure if your project could be delayed a while, but two years is probably too long. Any comments?
Well, from a delay perspective, the difficulty, the core difficulty there is, you know, just trying to take the ground under contract. You know, our objective is, is to put it under purchase agreement, which we have. And then the objective was to close on it in the spring and then move right into construction immediately. It gets a little bit difficult just holding the ground and then waiting for a period of time. I know that doesn't affect you, but that's, you know, from our financing and everything like that perspective, that's why it gets tricky. The other, so the other big question mark is just the market in general. We've had a market study completed. We understand the market is still strong. And then I'll say the final piece is just overall construction costs. It's just, even though I think they're even really high right now, I just can't imagine what they could grow to over time. So it is difficult to forecast anything that far out. So, but our objective would definitely be to try to begin construction in the spring of 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. The third reading and vote will be held on January 19th, 2021.
Mayor?
Yep.
We did have a couple come in while they were discussing. Just be safe. I'll just read them if you're okay with that. We'll read them in the record. Go ahead. Okay. One was from Chris Stewart. He said, "I remember hearing about another road being built to bypass Willow Springs. I think that's been in place before to add any more housing in the area." And then Rena Sharp said, "I completely agree with that. I'm happy that road will be used. The road structure will be placed first."
Okay, so again, the third reading and vote will be held on January 19th, 2021. Item 13, ordinance is for introduction, first reading we have at this time. Item 14B, request for an additional use, a conditional use permit for Lot 1, buy-in subdivision for the purpose of auto sales. Applicant is Edward A. Gilbert. Location is 2620 Greenfield Street, number 100. And I will open that request up for a public hearing. And is the applicant online? So I'm looking for Edward Gilbert and see if he's online. Okay, he can jump in at any time while the public hearing is open, but either the public hearing is open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the conditional use permit request for Lot 1 buy-in subdivision?
Mayor Hike, the applicant is on Facebook Live.
Okay. So he's on there. If anybody has any questions, so Mayor must fill season type in something.
Mayor Hike, Mr. Gilbert said he tried to call, but nobody answered.
Okay, does he want to try to call back in? Yeah.
I will comment.
Reminder, the public hearing is still open for anyone wishing to speak. Give Mr. Gilbert a moment to connect.
Phil, are you gonna read in Tracy Liebert's email with the pictures?
I will as soon as I find it here. Who was it from, Jim?
Tracy Liebert. You want me to read it in?
Yeah, if you could. Yes.
Okay, she included pictures, which I think Phil already forwarded everybody to, but she's, hello, I asked you not to allow the expansion of the car lot behind Chandler in on Mo's Drive. They say all will be behind fences. They just put a fence behind one portion of it, but it was not there when you had the last meeting. Here are the pictures that all the vehicles.
Mr. Gilbert's trying to call in, but he says he needs a code.
Shirley, your mic is live.
Which about fifteen or not. They are turning it into a salvage yard and you are allowing it to happen if you approve this tonight. I think Phil sent you the pictures. I don't know if you guys. Bre, if I send this to you, are you able to put this up?
If you send what to me?
The email with the pictures of this individual's car lot.
Yes, I can put that up. I thought you were talking about Facebook. Yes, I can put up the pictures.
This is Tammy. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Let me just add some clarification. So code enforcement has gone out to that property. There are two different business owners out there. Mr. Gilbert's on one side. There's another gentleman on the other. So there's two different business owners on the property.
So Tammy, that there's, in the picture, there's a sign that has G period, S period, auto. Is that the other owner?
I'm trying to get the pictures up.
That would be great if I could see the picture.
So Tracy Liebert is the same one that was commenting on item 12A. We're not getting those mixed up, correct?
No, she's specifically on this one.
Okay.
So that's the best I can do with my one screen here. It won't let me expand it any further. Can everybody see those? Okay?
Yes.
So the current, the current zoning allows for automotive repair. So the business owners are allowed to have cars parked there. They just can't be scrap or salvage. If they're there for repair, if they're licensed, if they're operable, then they're okay per the current zoning.
So Tammy, you mentioned that code enforcement had been there. Has, have they been for this particular business or the other business?
They went to both. So it's the same address. So it went to both of the, the entire property.
I think what Tammy just, sorry, go ahead, Kathy.
I was gonna say, you're gonna have to say that again, because we got none of that.
I think that Tammy said that they went to both properties.
Correct. So can you guys guys hear me?
No.
Really normal.
Is it, can you hear me at all?
No, it's a lot of reverberation.
Hey, Tammy, Mr. Gilbert just called and I gave you the link to the vote 2 meeting. He may be able to join.
Tammy, could you try to call in on the phone?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us.
Mayor, we had another comment from Tracy Liebert on Facebook, would you like me to read that in?
Yes, please.
Tracy Liebert said, the owner said all of their vehicles would be operable, an operable car lot cleans their cars off to be sold. How many days ago did it snow? Friday, question mark? I really don't feel he is going to comply at what he is saying he will do. And she's referencing those pictures that I have pulled up right now. And then David Nitch in ICH responded, none of them are for sale, or none are for sale yet.
Right. So those are cars that are sitting there for the repairs to be made. We're still waiting for...
Mr. Gilbert's calling back in.
A call in here, so hold tight, please. I just got another phone call from Ed Gilbert, he was having a little trouble, so he's gonna try to call in.
Hello?
Ed, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, Ed Gilbert is now on the phone. Everybody can hear you?
Yes, it's, I can hear you, but it's very muffled.
Okay, I think they can hear you pretty clear, so if you wanna, if you've heard any of those questions and you want to explain or kind of tell us what you're doing there?
Um, yeah, we have a auto repair shop, and we have a tow truck that we use for that as well. We repair cars, the special use permit is going to be for auto sales. We're not a giant car lot by any means or anything like that, we just, we have a dealer's license, we end up with a lot of cars that people don't want to fix. To keep my guys busy, we repair those cars and then we resell them. We have no derelict cars. I know there's a lot of controversy with the one end of the building and the person that's in down there that has nothing to do with my repair shop. I don't know how else to explain it, I mean, we run a very nice business, we keep everything very clean, there's no derelict cars, so I guess I'm open to questions other than that.
Sorry, Mayor.
Hi, this is Tammy, I don't know if you can hear me now?
Yeah. I do, I can.
Perfect, I'm on the phone, so if there's any questions, just let me know.
So, Mr. Gilbert, so have you had any code violations that, yourself, or?
I have been in business for the last 12 years. We started out down in the Helms addition, down there, by Paradise Lakes. I rented a building from Howdy Helms for six years. We had no code violations at all down there. I had my dealer's license in the Helms addition for four years down there. Had no code violations, no violations at all. When you change addresses, the state basically revokes your dealer's license because you change locations, then everything has to be okayed at the new location before they give you the license. I've had no problems, no violations with the city, with the state licensing board, nothing at all.
So what I'm hearing is you probably not going to count on auto sales, but it's kind of a side business to take care of some of your cars that are left, or?
Yes, sir.
You might do a few?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we do, the main thing we do is auto repair. Like you said, a side thing, we do some towing as well, auto repair, and then the extra cars that we get, a lot of times people can't repair them, they can't afford it, so I purchase them. And then we actually repair them and then put them back out on the street for sale. And that's, that's what the dealer's license would be. By no means am I going to go to auctions and have 20 cars out here for sale. At most, there might be four, five, six at the most. I believe we put down in the application that there would be 10 at the most, and that's, I mean, that 10 is stretching it quite a bit. I mean, maybe two, three, four at a time is, is all we would do as far as that goes. But yeah, it's just another part of my business, it's nothing that I would depend on 100%.
Okay, Mr. Gilbert, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep you here, I just want to see if there's anybody in the public, other words, I'm gonna close the public hearing, so we can make some additional thoughts as a council as soon as that's closed.
Very good.
Is there anybody else out in the public that wants to speak regarding the conditional use permit? Mr. Risto, can you hear me?
Yes.
Jim, hey, I'm, this is Phil, I am a little bit behind on my Facebook Live down here, so if you have any comments that appear, can you go ahead and read them?
Just got one now, and it's from Mary Haley Milovich, 100% against car lot behind Dynamark. It's so cluttered back there, I watched them towing a vehicle in there yesterday, and they got back in there with the tow truck, but had no room. Put the vehicle in tow. And then Elsie Worno came in too, the more affordable quality cars that could be available for our community to purchase, the better. If the business has not had violations, I see no reason not to allow it. I guess, I don't want to interject here, but are we confusing him, Tammy, are we confusing him with the other business on the end of the lot?
That's what I'm wondering. Like I said, code enforcement has been out there, to my knowledge, they did not provide the applicant with any notices.
Okay, anybody else out in the public? They've been moving my mics around, can you still hear me? Anybody else out in the public that would like to comment? Okay, Bree, are you, do you have a connection, are you, do you see anybody?
I don't, I don't see anything that Tim hasn't.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and again, if the public has anything, they can send those comments in, we'll make sure the council gets them after the meeting. Councilwoman Welch, you have questions?
Yes, please, for Mr. Gilbert. So, on our form that talks about the request, so I have a question for him and a question for Tammy Palm. The first question is, Mr. Gilbert, you said that you wouldn't be buying any cars at auction, but yet it says, Mr. Gilbert has indicated the vehicles to be sold will be purchased at auction, repaired by his shop, and then placed on the lot for sale, so I'm a little confused on that.
We do buy cars at auctions, but I guess when, when I explained that, I didn't do that fully. We, like I said, we don't go to auctions and buy multiple cars. We have purchased auctions, cars at auctions before. When, when we're repairing vehicles, sometimes it's less inexpensive to buy a complete car through a salvage auction to get a engine or a transmission. Basically, we salvage the parts and then we take the car across and sell it to the scrapper type thing. But as far as us going to the auctions and purchasing five or six cars to immediately flip out for sale, that's not what we do. We do occasionally buy cars at auctions.
Okay, so I guess what I'm understanding, your whole purpose is, a car comes in to be fixed, you say it's gonna cost X amount of dollars to fix it, the owner says, I can't afford that, so they give you the title, you fix it, and you're going to sell it. That's kind of the purpose of what you want to do, those types of instances, is that correct?
That is, that is, that is what has happened in the past, yes.
Okay, and Tammy, you have any heartburn on this?
No, Mr. Gilbert meets the requirements of the ordinance as far as parking, as long as he abides by the conditional use permit agreement. He did mention he also has to be licensed, so the state has stringent requirements he will have to meet in order to have a dealer's license.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I would just remind the council too, this is very similar to what we proved for Tuffy's out on Cornhusker about six weeks ago, maybe. Same type of deal, but, you know, different location, of course. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, one quick question, does Mr. Gilbert, or Mr. Gilbert can answer it, do you own the building, or are you a renter?
I am a renter.
He leases.
Yes.
And Tammy, Tammy, that has no bearing on a conditional use permit versus, you know, I guess my question would be, is the owner in agreement with this?
Correct. So we have not only Mr. Gilbert sign the conditional use permit, but also the owner, so he is fully aware, and his name is on the conditional use permit agreement as well.
So, if Mr. Gilbert would someday close down and move somewhere else, does the conditional use permit go away?
No, it would stay with the property.
Okay, and continue to allow this type of business there?
Correct. We would have to amend the conditional use permit agreement, though, to have a different applicant.
So is this just for part of the building and part of the land, or all the building? It sounds like there's two occupants and all of the land.
It's going to be for, the lot is not separated, so it's, the legal description is for the entire lot. The conditional use permit is for Mr. Gilbert's specific business, for Mr. Gilbert specifically.
Tammy, I, the entrance to that building, is that the entrance to the building for customers, would that be on the north side, which would be behind that Dynamark, or is it on Greenfield Street?
No, it's on the north side.
Okay, so the entrance to this building would be behind the building, I think it's Dynamark Chandler Bar and a couple other...
Correct.
Okay, now, is the lot on the south side of the building, south of Greenwood, or where? Where the cars are at, outside?
On the north side of the building.
Yep, there you go, Bree just put up a picture.
Okay, I, Mr. Gilbert, I didn't hear your response.
The, the parking for the building that I'm in is in between the Dynamark and my building. We have no access at all to Greenfield Road.
And the reason why I'm asked, the reason why I'm asking is, the address is 2620 Greenfield Road, which you would think the entrance would be on the south side of the building, actually on Gold Road.
Yes, you would, you would think with the, the address being what it is, we would have some type of access to Greenfield Road, and we do not.
And, so the outside cars parked in the fence, is that on the east side of your building?
The east side of the building is my fenced-in area. The west side of the building is where the, the vehicles in question are, the campers and the, the other vehicles that are inside the fenced-in area that, that, that are not mine. The east side of the building is my business, the west side is the other person's business.
Thank you.
Can see your hands of your council member, you have questions, just jump right in.
Mayor, this is Don Preister, and I do have questions for both Mr. Gilbert and Ms. Palm. Thank you for putting up the map. Ms. Palm, we've got Mo's Avenue that would, on this picture, you can see it up on the kind of top center right. It is not going through into the lot, but people have driven, and you, you have a trail going through, they jumped the curb. Is there any plan by the owner of the property or the city to do anything with making that an entry exit for traffic?
The city has no plan at this time.
Okay, and the street behind it, that Councilman Cook was rightfully questioning is Greenfield Street. It's a dirt gravel, unimproved road, and it goes kind of to the back entrance, but doesn't really, it's not really a true street to the school, Chandler View, which is up there. So it's unimproved, but yet it's the address for this building. Is there any plans for Greenfield in the future?
Not to my knowledge, there are no plans to improve that.
Okay, it, it just, for the public and the address, some clarification there. And the address seems strange, but maybe it's because of the way it's two buildings together facing or fronting Chandler Road. The questions that I have for, oh, Ms. Palm, the code enforcement did go out, I would assume they would have had some notification or citations perhaps to the west lot. That area did not have a fence prior to code going out, I believe, and a fence was recently installed just prior to the snow. And I'm wondering if there were any citations or anything, or notices issued to any of those vehicles, do you know?
Yes, code did have conversations with that business owner. I know that they are in the process of trying to get things cleaned up.
Okay, so as a result of the neighbors and the neighbors at the Planning Commission public hearing, the city has been responsive, code has gone out, and the offending or the business that has issues is having to address those. You stated that Mr. Gilbert and his lot on the east did not have any of those citations, correct?
Correct, and code has been out a number of times in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, and when I drove by prior to the snow, it's a little harder to see now with traffic, but the area in front of the building did at that time look fairly kept, and all of the parking stalls were painted clearly, and it looked like, if I counted right, approximately 22 parking stalls are available out there. And what would be required for the business and for any requirements to be parking there?
You are correct, in the number of stalls and that they were recently striped. 17 are required for what he wants to do, so he is in excess of that requirement.
Okay, and then, Mr. Gilbert, you responded that you wanted in the application to have 10 stalls for sales, but I believe you just voiced that you're only gonna have three or four or five cars with you for sale. Would you have a problem reducing that number from 10 down to a lesser number?
10 is, is what's required by the state in Nebraska for the dealer's license.
I see, okay.
Whether or not I use them is, is a different thing, but 10 is required.
That's a minimum standard set by the state.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We have a couple of people that are on, I think Tracy Liebert also, Liebert is also concerned, and I think she may have thought that the west parking area... area was part of your project, but we've clarified that that's not the case. Would you be willing to meet with her and some of the neighbors to further clarify and allay some of their concerns and fears about this business?
Of course.
And would you, would you have any particular timeframe that you need to have this done by, so that if we laid it over and didn't take a vote on it tonight, you could do it, and we could bring it back up at our next meeting? And before you answer that, our next meeting will not be the first Monday in January because of the holidays, but it will be the third Tuesday of January. But my question is, would it be an inconvenience or a hardship or a problem for you if we delayed this until that January, third Tuesday meeting, and give you a chance to visit with the neighbors to work out any concerns?
I, I don't have any problem with it, but the state of Nebraska, I'm, I'm trying to get the paperwork and everything filed before the first of the year. They do everything from the first to the first, but I, I wouldn't have any problem with meeting with anybody about any questions that they have, or they can actually walk through my business, and I can, I can show them anything they would like.
Okay. When, when you say this, you want to get the application in, I assume that it's a license for the full year, and so you don't necessarily have it in by the end of this year. Is that accurate?
No, not by the end of this year, by the first of next year.
Oh, the first of next year, you need to have an application in for that upcoming?
There, there is no deadline, but the, as far as my bond and everything goes, it starts on the first, so.
Okay. I'm, I'm trying to be helpful. I'm sorry if it may come across that way, but I, I am sensitive to the traffic and the neighbors' concerns, particularly the school being right next door and all the access and coming out again right directly onto Chandler Road. I don't think Tracy Leibert is able to converse, but I would hope that she and any other neighbors would be willing to go in and visit with Mr. Gilbert or call his business, so that concerns can be directly addressed and clarified if they can hear me. I believe that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay, so the interest of keeping this item moving forward, the public hearing has been closed. I'm going to let Phil read any other statements that came in, since I closed it just for the council's use. And then we will entertain a motion, and we can certainly have more discussion after we get a motion on the table.
Mayor, I believe that Councilman Preister addressed the last two that came in from Tracy Leibert, and I did get one from L.C. Warnell that said, "The more affordable quality cars that could be available for our community purchase, the better. Business has not, has not had violations. I see no reasons not to allow it." Tracy Leibert did write back, "The vehicles in question, the pictures was all in front of his business. I did, however, take one picture at the other end where the camper is." I'm assuming she's talking about what she emailed you guys. And Mary Haley Novich, and correct me, Mr. Risto, tell me if you've already read these. She said she's 100% against the car law behind Dynamart. It's so cluttered back there, I watched a tow on a vehicle there yesterday, and they get back there with a tow truck and had no room to put the vehicle on tow. And, I mean, that's all I have. Mr. Risto or Bree, do you have any other ones?
Nope, you got it. We're good.
Okay, let's take a motion, get a motion on the floor, if we can get one. Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I, I would move to lay this over till the meeting in January to give the applicant and the neighbors an opportunity to visit, and then bring it back at that time.
Motion by Preister to lay it over till the next meeting in January. Is there a second on it? No seconds, so motion fails. Do we have another motion?
No second.
What's that? Okay, no second.
Can we have the applicant mute his microphone on his phone?
Mr. Gilbert, can you mute?
Sorry, sorry.
So is there a second to table it? Okay, no second, so that motion fails. So do I have a motion? Another motion. Councilwoman Welch?
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to approve Mr. Gilbert's request.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Stinson, to approve. So now, we'll take a discussion. I think we've had some, but is there any other discussion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, Mr. Gilbert was down by Helms, sounds like for several years, and said he's never had any violations or code enforcement down there. I don't think we've heard any of issues where he's, the new place he's at. It seems like it's geared towards the people on the west side of the building. I think he has shown to us that he has probably been a good business person, not only down in, by Helms, but also where he's located at now. And I think there is probably a, a need for this type of service in that area. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Discussion? Comments? Questions? I don't see any hands. Yell at me if there are. Okay, seeing nobody, we have a motion by Welch, second by Stinson, to approve the conditional use permit. Please vote.
Okay, I've only got three votes coming up. Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Preister?
No.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
So we got five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Preister voting no.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for getting on the line, Mr. Gilbert. Item number 15, Resolutions 15A. Resolution number 2020-45, implementing changes to the city's sick leave policy for employees in response to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. No motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve 15A, Resolution 2020-45.
I will second.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Okay, I've got Mr. McCaw's a yes. Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook is a yes. Mr. Preister?
Yes, and I do not get a screen, so I don't have the option to vote. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Burns, you're yes. And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 15B, Resolution number 2020-46, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the annual year-end certification of city street superintendent form for 2020, verifying Robert Joseph Riggs as the city's street superintendent from January 2nd, 2020 to December 31, 2020. Need a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve Resolution number 2020-46.
I'll second that.
Second by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I'm just going to do a verbal vote. Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 15C, approved and authorized the mayor to sign Resolution number 2020-47, a resolution unanimously expressing continued support for the city of Bellevue's United States Air Force off Air Force Base to be selected for the U.S. Space Command Headquarters, and then certified copies of this resolution be directed to the offices identified in this resolution. Councilman, is it who's that, McCaw?
Welch.
Welch, okay, sorry. Councilwoman Welch?
Yeah, Jerry and I do kind of look like each other. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2020-47.
Second.
A motion by Welch, second by Burns. And I would just add, you have a really good task force, and it's a metro-wide, statewide task force working on this entire campaign. I can't get too detailed, because we do have competition, five other, five other sites. But we are meeting on a daily basis, every morning at 7:00 a.m., and we set up a new task for the day and complete that, start another one the next day. A lot of people working really hard on it, and our community, I think our community shines, so hopefully we will have an answer. They're doing a virtual tour around the 20, on the 22nd, and they'll probably be deciding on this sometime early January. So it's fast-moving, and we'll know our answers here before too long. Appreciate solid support on this one. Any comments or questions?
Just to let them know that we are excited about this opportunity and love having our veterans here that we can support any way we can.
Thank you. All right. Motion by Welch, second by Burns, please vote.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 16, current business, 16A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the proposal with Windy Prairie Systems, Inc., for the electronic information kiosk for the Bellevue Cemetery Project in an amount not to exceed $26,500. Take a motion. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item 16A.
Second. I'll second it.
Second by Councilwoman Welch. Burns, motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. 16B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with HGM Associates for the 2021 through 2022 City of Bellevue Bridge inspections in an amount not to exceed $17,800. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item 16B.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 16C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Creative Sites LLC for the all-inclusive playground project at Stone Rock Park in an amount not to exceed $372,254, plus a 10% contingency of $37,225.40, for a total project cost of $497,479.40. Councilman Burns?
Move that we approve item 14C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. One quest, well, two questions. It shows a $400,000 cost, but $300,000 from the budget, and then a grant. Just maybe some clarification on the grant. And then a second question is, it asks for a roll code that's being recommended in three years for an additional $9,000. Should we have an amendment to add that, or does Parks think we can come back to it later? So the first question is the grant funding, and then the second one is, do we want to amend to add the roll code now?
Jim, you want to handle that?
Yep. So from our budget, if you call in budgeting, we put a $200,000 earmark on maybe a special project, which is being defined as this one. So we'll burn up our $200,000 that we allocated for parks. We have $100,000 in ADA money that was budgeted for our park improvement. We'll use that for this project. The grant money did not come through, but we do have $100,000 in public works or in parks to handle the balance of this. So all the money is actually coming out of city budget. And then to answer your second question, I think we'll just come back for that, that $9,000 request down the line. I don't think we have to amend it, this one.
Okay, then we don't need the amendment, and that's good clarification on the $200,000 that we were looking at for other parks improvement. It's all going into one project, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion by Burns, second by Welch, please vote.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
I'd like to say thank you, and I vote yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 16D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the certificate of compliance and the maintenance agreement number five with Nebraska Department of Transportation for reimbursement in the amount of $21,859.20. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve 16D.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 17 are the administration reports. Those are turned in in the first meeting of the month. So we'll wait for those. Actually, when will we get those, Jim, since we won't have a first meeting, so is it the second meeting of January?
Those will all be on January 19th. It'll be a long report.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate that, and I would just add that thanks for Phil and Stacy trying to make this work in here. I think they took my suggestion and moved it to the council chambers. I'll bet we move back to the other room next time. A little challenging, but thanks for sticking with us. I had a meeting, closed session, there isn't none, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns, please vote.
Mr. McCaw?
Yes.
Mr. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, happy holidays.
Same to you. Mr. Preister?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
And Ms. Welch?
Yes, and happy holidays.
All voting yes.
All right, thank you.